Be with our borough, please. Thank you for each other and Jesus save me, pray.
All right, pledge.
Let's introduce the citizens of America. And to the people for which it stands. One nation, under God.
Well, this is unusual. You're still on Zoom.
Well, and I was thinking Fred, when we advertised, when we advertised meetings, we did them, we advertised that they would be on YouTube, right?
Not anymore because you can, we have the option. We're going to get on YouTube.
But it wasn't in the advertisement?
No.
Okay. All right, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You can't.
You can't for a while, right? Okay. All right, roll call.
Mr. Crouch. Mrs. Steele.
Here.
Mr. Erickson. Mr. Darius. Mr. Sakebitt.
Here.
Mr. Penner.
Here. All right, we're still one short of a quorum. I know Mr. Crouch is on his way. So we'll have a quorum once he's, once he gets here. Um, sorry, I gotta go back and forth between Zoom and the agenda. Uh, citizen comment period. You're up.
You might have heard I proposed an idea that's already discussed about having a context mirror based on the perception of West Big Spring Avenue and High Street. It was said that Penn Dot or what was the company?
Uh, Penn Dot.
And Penn Dot was disagreed with that idea since it's on their property essentially. I was speaking with Randy here, suggested talking with PPNL, maybe put it on a light post, a light post.
If you're, if not into a, it's a linkable, powerful, your friend is that?
If we, if we give.
Another shame.
We, we would require two permits. One, Penn Dot, because we're still on the right way from the PPNL permit amount. Which is just too.
That would be to give a better view of traffic.
Yes, since there's so many cars parked along the.
And I'm assuming it would probably be best like there by the print shop.
Yes, right, right.
Right in front of the print shop. Because nobody parks really on the other sides right up to, right up to.
If we could talk to any, you know, they're supposed to run his building, is that involved?
If it was attached to his building, you would back off the right way.
What does that mean?
That means we would not have to go to Penn Dot.
So that's the best approach to do that?
Well, it would arrive. It would require the owner gives permission.
I want to show you the scene.
Yes.
The ownership of food table. And it would be done, it would be done eventually.
No.
So maybe if we come save this building.
Scott, who was that that's speaking?
Uh, what was your name?
My name is Gabriel.
Uh, Gabriel, and where do you live?
West Big Spring.
What, he lives on West Big Spring Avenue?
Gabriel was already detailed on the question.
Thank you.
So, I mean, thanks for bringing it up. We'll certainly look into it and see what we can do. And like I said, um, little further long, long range plan. We've, we're seriously looking at that intersection to have a handicap accessible ramp and the flashing light, like what's down at Zion. Yeah, so.
So would you get a better?
Yeah, Tim's with us.
You get a better ask next time he's up in the borough. I'll take a look at that. We could work on the after.
Tim, did you catch that?
I'm catching bits and pieces of that, Scott. It's a little difficult to hear the folks that are there in person other than you.
So, um, at the intersection of High and West Big Spring Avenue, because of all the cars that park so close to the intersection, the thought was, you know, would it be helpful to put a mirror, one of those mirrors there? And Fred had suggested maybe the next time you're in town, we can look at that. And, uh, you know, I know there's an application process if we have to go through Penn Dot and PPNL and stuff, so.
Well, sure, I'm happy to look at anything you'd like me to when I'm down that way.
We might also want to put it on the building. At the corner, the print shop.
The print shop at the corner. That would avoid then Penn Dot and PPNL.
Yeah, I guess the question would be if you move it back to the other side of the sidewalk against the wall, are you gonna get a big, you're gonna get the right angle?
Right.
Uh, I mean, those nerves work.
That's why they're, they're best on full.
Yeah.
Right.
But that's what Tim looked at, I guess, is what the best position would be. And we have to do that. I can have what you're doing.
Could always put one of those, uh, they're my favorites, the raised intersections.
Oh, yeah.
Um, what do they call them?
Speed hump. Traffic hump.
Yeah. It's like a speed hump, but it's the entire intersection.
Hmm.
It's raised. And you slow down for it.
Yeah, we have several of those here in Chambersburg and they always catch your attention if you forget they're there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. A couple of layer time.
Anything else, Gabriel?
No, I was just thinking that that great intersection, especially with those people coming off to the, you know, they're always needed.
Yeah, it definitely slows you down. All right, well, thank you. Uh, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you want, or whenever you get bored, you can head out. All right. Um, next up, again, I'm sorry, I gotta go back and forth here. Uh, legal matters. Mr. McKnight.
Yeah, the resolution 2001-09. We haven't adopted that yet, so appropriate adoptance since we get it more.
Okay. Was there any concerns about that? That, that went to the county, everything?
I sent it down to Justin. He didn't have any comments. I sent it to Barrett. He had no comments. Basically an update every two years where we required to update our emergency plan, which includes, uh, storm plans for hurricanes, winter storms. Includes documents such as emergency proclamations of the mayor, reported issue, uh, call out the information, contractors to work with us. We're, are required every two years to update this now, get updated. So the only thing you have to do is pass a resolution, bring up date, update the adopt plan. And I think this is ready, uh, to be approved at the July 27th, uh, 2021.
Okay. So once we have a quorum, we'll address that. Uh, let's go ahead and move to, um, Tim and the truck study. All yours, buddy.
Thanks, Scott. Um, nice to be with you all this evening. Uh, some time ago, Fred contacted me to inquire about putting together a truck restriction study for a series of streets in the borough. And I had the pleasure of meeting with him and with the police chief to talk about which streets and to get a little bit better understanding of what the issue was. And I think you guys understand better than anyone what the issue is, but obviously we're trying to, uh, keep trucks on the proper streets. The eight streets that we took a look at as part of this report, in every instance, we came to the conclusion that it made sense to post, uh, no truck signs and also accept the local delivery signs along with them, uh, at different spots along those streets where we felt it made sense. And the, you know, the reasoning behind that, again, you guys know better than anyone, but in some cases, it's the width of the street. In some cases, it's the type of neighborhood that you're running through. Uh, there's on-street parking, there's pedestrian facilities, uh, there are sight distance or geometry problems in some instances. You guys have a whole host of reasons why these streets do not make sense for heavy truck traffic and why we're trying to keep those trucks on those proper state routes. You know, my one concern as I was looking at this was just to make sure that we weren't doing something where trucks weren't going to be able to get through the borough, but that's not the case. Uh, the one place where you do have that pinch point is there at the, um, the signal light where I believe there's that one turning movement that is prohibited. And I know you guys have been doing everything you can to try and prevent that. And, uh, when, when things happen as they will, uh, that tends to back things up and create havoc in the borough. But I do believe that this is going to help eliminate the problems though on all these side streets. I think it makes perfect sense, this report, uh, being prepared by an engineering firm, uh, is not a hundred percent necessary to do this, but it is something that gives you the ability to support in case somebody challenges this in court, that you've had somebody with some experience and some expertise, take a look at these issues. I think I said before that when you take a look through the report, we did a fairly extensive job of mapping each of those segments of roads. And we've also included the spots where we believe that the signage makes sense. I believe as I totaled it up today, there's a total of 20 locations where there would be signs posted. And I know I did see an email from the police chief saying he had reviewed this and thought it was in order with, uh, what he was hoping to see. So, uh, yeah, Fred asked me to, uh, join you here tonight to sort of summarize what that report was all about and, uh, answer any questions if I can, uh, moving forward. But I do believe the next step is once we're satisfied with the report is for an ordinance to be prepared to, uh, further support the placement of these signs and the enforcement of the restrictions that go with them.
First of all, thanks, uh, for the report. The maps are easy to read. Question on West Big Spring Avenue. And I know when we, we first talked about this, you know, we have, we do have a trucking company in town. And we, you know, we certainly don't, they've, they've been good neighbors to us and we want to be good neighbors to them. At the intersection of Fairfield Vine and West Big Spring, there is, uh, you have two no-turning signs there. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, I can tell you that they turn there multiple times a day. Um, but I also understand engineering wise, that there, if, if there's cars parked at the stop sign, they let them go, otherwise they would have to back up. There's no way they can make that turn. So they, their business is actually at where it's, uh, where it says Walnut Street, West Big Spring Avenue. How would they, how would they get out of their, their business?
Well, again, keep in mind that this is once again geared towards restricting traffic, but allowing local deliveries. And I guess maybe that's a question for your legal counsel, but in our minds, that sort of covered any existing businesses that have truck traffic associated with it. Um, if the destination or the origin of the trip is a local business along that route, it's certainly not the intent of this report or any follow-up ordinance to restrict that.
I think we can cover that in the definition section. If we define local deliveries, would include local businesses within the borough. I had this incident come up back in the 1980s. Township man. And we were imposing similar restrictions on a very mountainous area of the township. And we had the captain of local state police come up and address the supervisor. And he referred to the company that was in the township as the generator. They were going out of the township and to go down the grade, they could come back to their shop because they were a generator. They weren't making deliveries, they weren't driving through, uh, that's where their facilities were located, township police and state police would do nothing to ticket them, provided a state monster, state highway. That sticks in my mind. It would be the same, very much the same type of incidents we have here.
Yeah, so Scott, I think to answer your question, it really does often come down to the language within the actual ordinance. And it sounds like Marcus has a good bead on that as far as definitions would go to, uh, clarify that situation.
Okay. I assume fire trucks doesn't apply to any, any of them or anything like that? Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Again, great report. Good job.
My pleasure, and, uh, I'll try and get down there here one of these days soon. Maybe we can, uh, knock a couple of things out at the same time and we can take a look at that citizen's request while we're down there.
Excellent. Sounds good. Thank you.
Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. All right, Mr. Knight. So I guess we can go ahead and start working on that ordinance. Anything else that we're, we're missing?
None of that ordinance, but the, uh, he just gave me some, some language that he wants to incorporate, we can do that. So I think we're in much better shape with that ordinance, how we have this report. We go back to, uh, we have a quorum here adopting the emergency management.
Yep. So. So we can do it at the end of the month? All right. Let's just hold off.
We're not late.
Okay.
What'd you say?
All right.
I do have a couple more things I want to, uh, learn.
Okay.
Jody, uh, we're not gonna do anything tonight on this, but the borough of Carlisle has the same issues with, uh, the restaurants and, um, and of container restricting, uh, the container ordinances. So I have an article that was in today's paper. The borough of Carlisle is going to, uh, rush through an ordinance permitting current, uh, current, current restaurants to be able to have containers, um, for distribution and sale. You guys have it up over there?
Yeah.
We're good, yep.
Okay, so you can read through that and you can see that they limit their own container, uh, permissions they plan to within this ordinance. And I haven't seen it yet. I'll get a copy of it. To the, to the commercial area downtown, although there's some talk of expanding it a little bit wider. And the basis of doing it is the, during COVID, the governor urged the LCB to be liberal in permitting outside dining in these various restaurants to keep them functional. So, um, just for your information, uh, it shows you how, um, Carlisle is dealing with it now. Of course, they, they've had their licenses in Carlisle for many years, so, um, but they're very interested in. And they do reference certain things. For example, COVID in the borough, we didn't have the agency college students. So, question is, what's the impact of the college and law school coming back? But they've also indicated that it's sometimes since they've had any problems with people dining and using. Just for information that, uh, Jody, do you get emails?
Yes, I do.
All right, what, what do you get out to you?
Okay, thank you very much.
So I just want to bring that to your attention and, uh.
I appreciate it.
Like we say, we're gonna see how it goes, uh, how the first event goes and see then if we need to, we can organize. We will.
Long, that doesn't ask me, do we know for sure if they are coming?
Yeah, well, it's, there won't be problems if they don't come, but yes, we're there, yes. So that's, that's just what I want to bring to your attention.
Okay.
Bring this word to you.
Any questions for Mr. McKnight?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Mr. Crouch's administration.
I have a proposal from higher education to contain oral record. Fred has some details on that. I think they would have emailed everybody if not.
Yes.
They, they wanted to be here tonight for a presentation, but he's sick, so. Anything else?
It looks like that it may be about the idea of taking some pressure off, off our staff for getting documents stored and accessible. Be interesting to have, present, hear the presentation before we make the, make a decision, but I think we, at the same time, we have enough information to make this decision. Do you have anything to add to that?
The price to scan a page is, uh, seven cents paid and it is, uh, $1 for drawing, which would be a plan set. They can scan those. Initially, we would like them to focus on would be, uh, public meeting minutes, resolution book, and the ordinance. Uh, making sure that those documents are preserved, because this isn't as much about preservation of documents as it is making documents accessible. Once we scan those documents, we can begin to make them accessible to all members of council, to the solicitor, to the engineer, and to the public. And then once we get through those documents, council can decide on what other forms of documents we want to scan. But you all know we have a tremendous problem with records stored, at least in this district. We have records stored on every floor, uh, and varying degrees of condition, basically absolutely wireless. So this program you control, you control how much you want to put into it, how far you want to go at a time. They can start out at $5,000, work against that, and you can appropriate new funds, uh, next year. But any of the COVID inter-raptor funding that may be out there, uh, definitely could use for this. Uh, many district attorney's offices are now voiding, expanding their documents so that their people can work from home, state agencies are doing this as well. So, uh, it's definitely something that we should look into, I think would be a very time saver. I know the authority area in this department is the borough, uh, doing.
Do you know, are they equipped to do the historical documents we have?
Yes, I asked that question, uh, because we have minutes to go back to the, uh, pre-civil border. They have special scanners that do lots of pages. Uh, they have people that are trained in documents in special rooms that they scan. And so, yes, the answer to that.
Good.
Same sentence in a page. Uh, that probably would be a little bit.
Okay.
All right, Leonard's, uh, proposed the decision regarding rental inspection officer, uh, this Brandon, he suggested maybe, uh, Adelaxis, do you take on that role? She, she is interested.
No, she cannot do it. Uh, Mayor was in on Friday to talk to the chief's wish that, uh, we do not engage during this. Just too busy.
That's what I was, I was going to say, and from what I'd seen from you, you should express some interest, but the chief had contacted me and said he had some concerns and didn't think it was workable. And so I wanted to thought, I haven't had a chance to sit down and get those terms detailed. Uh, so I was gonna ask the table that, at least that kind of call.
Well, Scott came up with an idea that maybe we should just advertise, uh, see if, we do know that there's a gentleman that's retired over in the South Side who might be interested. There are a lot of people who have done home inspection work, might be retired and want to do this, you know, just as a part-time job. So the thought was maybe advertising. Check and see who might be interested.
Yeah, anybody that has. What's?
My whole until the end of the month, I talk to chief for just going to advertise and see what response we get.
I say we go ahead and advertise.
I mean, we can, you can still follow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Recognition that we.
Yeah, that was, that was what you. Your thoughts are putting too much. From what I gather, you thought there's going to be a little bit of conflict from the few jobs that she has that she takes off and has. Sorry, a little bit of conflict with, she's encountering with the, with the code board. So we decided to put her in some safety situations, perhaps from a legal standpoint. Us, her workload is, is all right.
We can open it up in Susan's?
Yeah.
Yeah. If we do interviews and bring them in. And if they're interested, then perhaps we can get them to do the zoning work now, too. Would mind if we do zoning ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, you had something?
Uh, this would be under administration. I will be spreading certain programs one night here, at 15:00, so, uh, with service commission, I'm going to send Lucy, Sarah's email address and my address, she may have an address, ask Lucy if she can take the mission schedule. Their organization being, uh, that either the chief or I know, and one of them should be there, but. You're getting that.
Have they, have they all been given? Well, obviously she has.
Yeah, they've all been provided.
Okay. Super. All right.
So we're motion to advertise.
Probably should, yeah.
Make a motion to advertise a part of that position for rental inspection officers.
Does that come with any training? Do you have to get trained in that?
You have to follow the International Property Maintenance Code. And they do offer a training class, but it's not offered very often. It may be available online now, COVID or any else is, I'm sure. Well, the training gap reason is starting to go back now, so.
That was one reason why I thought if we had somebody who does home inspections and it's something that they wanted to do just to get, I mean, it's only one inspection a week.
We have a checklist.
Yeah.
Each homeowner gets a checklist, the COVID officer, right? Those are important.
But they would already be trained in, in that. You probably know more home inspectors in this than all, everybody else in this room put together. So, yeah. All right. So we have a motion to, uh, approve, um, advertisement for a rental inspection person. Do we have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abode say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, anything else, Mr. Brown? Anything for Mr. Brown? EDA?
Don't have anything news since last week.
Any questions for Mr. Erickson?
I got along the lines of EDA, Scott Miller is coming in tomorrow to take out a permit for a transient retailer's license. His wife is proposing to do, uh, she calls a coffee cart, a mobile business that they could rent from sidewalks, go around town, go to the trailhead, go to the park. Uh, that's as much detail as I have.
Do, we, do we even require that?
Uh, under the transient retailer's license, uh, our license is good for five days, however. Years ago, we had another president of the borough had a stand-up fountain, and, and, yeah, forget the top lock, then, uh, we extended it thirty days rather than making it in every week. Now, Scott did tell me that it was your role to maybe open a coffee shop, since we're trying to determine how much business. Yeah, feel this is an easy way to get in.
Yeah, we, I'll change your step, but we had, like, when, we had the sister sweetie right here, she did a great job in the way.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Played a great job, and shame that never worked out.
It was a good job, very good response. But they were sold out.
I know, I know, that was just, with such a chance, so many people need counseling, and what is, they just stop.
They're waiting to stop.
Yeah, it was nice. So Fred, was he talking about, or was she talking about a permanent location or stationary?
They would like to have a permanent location, but before they invest, still we're going to try this.
Yeah. It's a great idea.
In Carlisle, my favorite, uh, four barbecue place started out as a food truck, uh, next to Enterprise.
Reds?
Reds, yes, and now they have two locations, one here being, uh, in Exeter. So, we're happy about that. But no, if they can try out their garden, see the business opportunity, it turns itself.
I think we should encourage it because, um, Scott and Erica have a business on Ice Creek, very good business. Not a lot of people know about, it's very interesting, they're doing very well. And they have been supporters of our unity, Joey knows they were big supporters of the, uh, co-tribe last Christmas.
And they really want to get involved with Newville, they want to, you know, participate in a lot of the things that we do. Um, I think we just, we need to give them a chance because they both are wealth of knowledge, if just given the chance, just to listen to them. Um, they're wonderful people.
Okay. All right, sounds good, so you don't need, they haven't actually come in for you.
There's a process they have to do in, by, uh, this would be cheap.
Okay. All right, Parks and Rec, Mr. Sinkovitz.
Yes, sir, well, I wasn't here last meeting for me, but, uh, Fred sent out an agenda for us for, uh, July twentieth, seventh, the items are, so that'll be a full meeting for us. Uh, contact the people, make sure they show up, so we do have a full, uh, group of people that are filled with responsibilities. But I, I just want to comment on item number one, we listed here for a summer recreation program or summer country series. Faith and Fun Day, I haven't heard any negatives about those at all, I think they've been really a plus for our rural community. So I don't know if anybody has ever heard, heard anything negative, but I want to compliment everybody, and I think we had it at the fountain last week, great, but, amazing to know each other, you men did a great job picking it up, nice. We don't, I will have something after about twenty.
Great, we seem to be going well.
Yes.
We have two, two good workers, Jody, Sandy.
Yeah. Yeah, can I throw this in, we had, also, we had, uh, for our first meeting for Trailhead, we were looking at a train, we had three people attend it, Jack and I, Sandy, and, uh, or I must say, Nancy. So that was kind of disappointing, we didn't get much accomplished, we had one set up for a kid to exact age, that's like the twenty-sixth or something. Yeah, so we're gonna supposedly, I'll make phone calls, and we only had one person, I was Mr. Ober, so he didn't want to be part of it, so, I was expecting everybody else to be here, we really gotta make it important.
Well, I'm confident you'll get the train on the tracks.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was bad.
That was bad, Scott.
Yeah.
First, I went on a train ride today.
All right, anything else for Mr. Sinkovitz? Very good, um, public safety, uh, we already, we already heard about the truck study, anything else for public safety? Quality of life?
Um, the only thing I have is, I had an email from Fred today, and he did tell me that he, um, submitted the application for, um, the small games of chance, so that we can do a raffle for the Wills for Warriors Car Show. So we just have to wait till we have, hear back from them so that we can move forward with our raffle, which is gift certificates to Saylor's Market, actually, so. That's all I have.
Okay, um, Joey, I have, uh, two temporary reserve parking requests. Here, they're both, um, for eighteen East Main Street, Mr. Eldon Bennett and Tiffany Smith. Uh, they're both, um, signed by the physician, um, so I guess we should probably take action and approve those.
Okay, um, I'm okay with it, as you, you have them there, so, um, I am okay with that.
So can we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the temporary parking for eighteen East Main Street.
Okay, that's been seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Uh, any extensions? Motion carries, um, I believe it's one month, isn't it?
I thought it was.
Might be ninety days.
Ninety days, I thought.
It might be. And they can, yeah, they can reapply.
And Fred, um, did you see where Ann Smith passed away, the Bell's wife?
All right.
How was your, Joey, you said yes?
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
Who you saying that we should have to take the sign back and put down that one here?
No, that's not why I said it, I, I'm just a little sad that she, you know, she and I got off on a rough spot when I first came on council, but we ended up becoming, you know, good friends, and it's just kind of sad that she passed away.
All right, any other, uh, old business?
Yeah, I wasn't here the last meetings, did we discuss anything in that letter, Carrie, I think Burke sent out, you might, about our month?
We did not, now, would you like to?
Well, I just didn't know what, was going to stop here, that they were going to shut it down, are going to continue on it, or are we going to carry it? Since we're going to be.
Yeah, I think we're going ahead with selling.
Selling.
I know they applied for rezoning, you know. We, we tested a bar.
That's all right. We took our position.
Yeah, yeah.
Made it known, so. He chooses not to listen to it, then that's, that's on him, so.
Yeah, he doesn't seem to be too open to the discussion, really, you know, even though he invited.
Yeah, that's why I'm surprised that he did.
I did, I, I found some flaws in his argument. Seems like there was much point pursuing it.
The big glaring one for me is that it's not county government's job to take care of.
Of that, and, and that, that, that their, their responsibility ended with me, that was part, that's part of the issue that presented us. A lot of, and I have a really young corporations don't accept that, they don't have to, so.
No, I, I hear you. Any other, uh, old business? New business?
Scott, I have, uh, two things under new business, number one, we should, uh, begin in preparation, the adoption of the new zoning ordinance, it is on the, uh, agenda for the planning commission meeting next week. So they will be voting on it at the planning commission, making a recommendation, bureau of council, and, uh, we should be prepared to advertise and have the ordinance ready for adoption, Marcus, I think Troy is, is part of this engagement is to help him prepare for that process. Uh, we have that coming up. Uh, I'd also like to make the, uh, council aware that Act sixty-five has passed and has been signed into law. And this amends section seven oh nine of the Sunshine Act, now require that our agendas are posted on our website. Uh, they must be posted here at the municipal building, uh, twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. We've set aside a place on the board, I mean, into the rural office, uh, copies must be available, and they always have been on the wall. A big change in this act is going to be, and I'll, I'll use the example of, of chief police hoping the mayor carry this back to the chief, often the chief comes in and under his report tells us he has a broken this or a broken that, and we make motion to buy a new body of cargo. Well, unless it's on our agenda in advance, others on our agenda, we cannot take action on it. We can discuss it, but we cannot take official action. So what is happening here is, no longer can we just bring something from the floor, off, off the cuff and say, well, hey, we saw a nice truck over here in township, let's buy it for broken part. We have to put that onto an agenda, give the public notice of it, and then vote on it, so.
And that's stupid.
What I would ask is that, uh, you as committee chairman, if there's something that you want on the agenda, even if it's just, you know, if we want to get it on for discussion purposes, let me know, so that I include it in the agenda. Uh, that way we won't be tabling and going over things, and mayor, if you were less than the chief knows, if he would, uh, not say we're including it. And the one thing I, I would point out, this does allow you to take, uh, action, official action, on anything real or potential in terms of a verdict. So if tonight you out of that storm, the mayor came in and said, look, we've got trees down, we've got to get contractor in work, you put act legally on that. Uh, the same way that the chief tells us, we've got a car that is out of service, we've got to get it fixed because we only have police work, so. I will make copies of this available to a meeting package, but just so you know, it's passed, and we, uh, will have to begin following this on August thirty.
Oh, yay.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else? All right, we do have a, a need for an executive session for personnel items, um, can I get a motion to?
We're going to.
What's that?
Personnel.
Okay. So we need a motion to go into. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say no. Motion carries, uh, we will take no action inside of executive session, if action is needed, we will, uh, take.